Fifteenth for our Committee on Committees meeting. I think this evening is going to be some information on some of the committees that we currently have. And I'm going to go ahead and start with Camilla. Um, I don't know if Marguerite wants to say anything prior to?
No, I I'm so thankful that Dave and Camilla are here to be able to talk about their expertise on the two subjects on the agenda. Thank you.
So can you do me a favor though, Marguerite? Can you talk about why this particular, these two particular committees are not the like the regular committees that come before Committee on Committees before Camilla and Dave give their explanations?
Well, these, these committees are follow the criteria for the state. And they're vetted through the social services because they have to be the right fit. Like psychologists, social workers, um, police officers, uh, teachers. Um, Camilla can absolutely talk more on that. Um, what we've always done, I mean, I've been here a long time, is we let social services do their jobs and they send forward those names that are important to those boards, especially for grants that they apply for at the state level. They have to have that right criteria uh and and meet all of those um guidelines. So um, I hope I answered the question, but Camilla really is the expert on it and I'll let her speak.
Right. I just wanted to make sure, right? Because like, like we spoke, I don't want um someone to start squawking. Every other committee has to come before Committee on Committees and do all this other stuff.
Right. This one is unique. This one is unique. It goes through social services. They have to vet know that they're the proper people, that they're absolutely going to show up to every meeting. They're absolutely going to be there for the needs that are at hand for the youth. Um, and that's really, really important. Um, so I hope I answered the question. Uh, anyone who doesn't understand can give me a call. I will be happy to explain it or call Camilla as she does this job and she knows it firsthand. Thank you.
Thank you, Camilla or Dave. It's going ahead.
I can start. Um, so we're coming before you all today for our juvenile review board, which we also call the JRB and our youth adult council. So I'll start with our juvenile review board. There are state statutes that dictate the membership of our juvenile review board, which makes it unique probably from some of the other um committees that come before you. And I'll read to you um what we have here in writing. Um, our juvenile and just to explain what the juvenile review board is. Um, it's an alternative for youth um to go before the state juvenile court for any types of misdemeanors or um trouble that they may get into at school or in the community or at home. Um, what used to be called a family with um service needs or prison used to go through juvenile court. That now comes through um the youth service bureaus and um the youth and their parents come before the board. Um, we discuss whatever the issues are at hand and um the the board issues whatever sanctions or community service um or um various consequences um so to speak for whatever actions that they come before the board for. So it's confidential. Um, we have to attend training. All members have to attend training, sign a confidentiality agreement. So that's one of the boards or um committees that you will never see on YouTube because um we're talking about minors and it's all confidential and in private. And so our um, our um requirements are that the JRB members include youth service bureau staff, who administrators, guidance counselors and or social workers, law enforcement officers, juvenile court personnel, Department of Children and Families, also known as CCF personnel, local service providers such as mental health agencies or other agencies serving youth, members of the faith community, local business persons or other appropriate community members. So um, we have submitted to you um our board members. Um, are there any questions about that before I get into the board members that we're presenting? Okay, um, so listed um for and they're typically for both our youth adult council and our juvenile review board, there are two-year terms. So um, we are requesting that their term goes from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five for both youth adult council and our juvenile review board. I'll get into youth adult council once I finish reading the list of of names here, if that's appropriate. Okay, so we have um Roger Bunker. He is a citizen representative, but many of you may know Roger. Um, he is is an attorney um and an advocate for youth. Um, he represents a lot of families um around special education needs. Um, and he is, he has been on the, I've been with the town twenty-three years and he's probably been here twenty years before I started with the town. He um is very much aware of the laws and the statutes um and is very helpful and informative in working with our youth and families. We have Patterson, also known as Don, Don Procker. Um, he serves as a citizen representative, but he also works for the Village for Families and Children, where he works for our fa- the fatherhood project through there um and comes with a wealth of information, knowledge, resources and referrals. Nicole Heath, who is also down as a citizen representative, she is an attorney um and has lived in Bloomfield for several years. Um, she is also a parent in which her child um has also participated in a lot of activities through both leisure services and um our youth services department. Mark Mitchell, he is a retired juvenile probation officer in this past year. Um, and um upon his retire, he, he served on our board for many years representing um juvenile court and he has continued on because he lives in Bloomfield as a citizen representative. He also um works for youth services here in our department and leisure services as well and serves many roles in our community. Um, a school counselor, Karen Goldman, she's at Carmanay Race Middle School. We have Mr. Alexander Cologne, who was a juvenile probation officer. We have um Jelly Zanny Kerion, who's also a juvenile probation supervisor. We have Laron Giddin, who is a juvenile probation officer. Um, the three representatives from juvenile court, they rotate um serving on our board, so they all don't show up, but they do ro- rotate their dates that they're there. We have from the Bloomfield Police Department Sergeant Stacy Thomas. Um, and then we have um four staff members from our department, Tiffany Wright, who is our assistant youth services coordinator and the JRB case manager, Angelica Thompson, who's our youth services coordinator, Kiola Vargas, who's our senior social worker, and Dawn Cooper-Groger. There is an error there. She's actually our assistant director now for our department.
Okay, excellent. So Marguerite, um, we need to have a vote to present these names to council, correct?
Correct.
Excellent. So um councillor Politis, I'm gonna need for you to make a motion and then I'll second the motion.
Motion to forward those names to town council.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries. Excellent. And I just want to say thank you, um, Camilla for overseeing this and for the work that this committee does, right? Because it helps our young people to get a second chance to think about what they've done to get some consequences to make sure that they don't do it again. So thank you so very much because this is so very very, very much needed. So even if I never get to see these representatives, please let them know that the town council appreciates them and uh really thank them for the work that they put in on behalf of our students.
I absolutely will. Thank you for those sentiments. Okay, next we will move on to our youth adult council. Um, our youth adult council serves as the advisory board for our youth services bureau. We every year receive a grant from the Connecticut Youth Services Association. A grant comes through them through the um, the State Department of Children and Families, CCF. It is a requirement of this group to um maintain an active advisory board. And there are requirements as to the composition of this board and I will read that um for you. Um, at least seven members, at least one member under twenty-one years of age who serves as a non-voting member. We typically typically have two youth who serve on the board. Representatives from the school system, police department and a private youth-serving agency, consumers of services provided by youth services, so typically parents, guardians or other family members. At least one-third of the total membership of individuals who receive less than fifty percent of their income from delivering services to youth. So a youth um representatives from a youth-serving organization. At least one member on the board from each municipality served by the YSB. So um we're one municipality, but there are some towns where it's shared between two or more municipalities. One-town council liaison, um, which is a requirement through the bylaws of youth adult council. Um, I don't remember if it was this year or a couple of years ago, it was agreed upon that whomever served as the um um, what's the word? The the chairperson for the community services subcommittee serves as the liaison um for youth adult council. Um, my department, um Dave's department, leisure services and senior services. Um, we all report to um the community services subcommittee and it just seems to make sense that whoever chairs that committee serves as the representative on um the youth adult council. So at this time, that is um councillor Tony Anthony Harrington. Um, and then it goes on to say per the bylaws of the Bloomfield Youth Adult Council, um, members are appointed every two years by the town council through the recommendation of the chairperson of the committees on committee. Um, and if if there are not any questions, I will move on to the names for our youth adult council. Some of these names are a repeat from our juvenile review board. Um, we have Roger Bunker and we've already discussed what he does. Um, Patterson, Don Procker, we've discussed um what he does as well, both serve on our juvenile review board. We have Donna Maitland-Ward. Um, she is our, actually our chairperson. Um, the other co-chair resigned and she now stays alone as the chairperson. Um, her children participated in activities um through our department, through leisure services and she is also an administrator at CCF, the Department of Children and Families. And she's been on our board for over twenty years. Kewanda Landham, she is a parent. Her child participates in our program as well as Ebony Davis is also a parent. Um, all of our youth, um, our school year youth programs have um ended. So the two youth representatives that's vacant at this time, usually in the fall, um, we assign two youth and if we have to, we'll come back to you all for um uh, to um a a appoint them to the youth adult council. Other representations, we have Ms. Chandler George, who works at the Family Resource Center at Lowell School. Um, we typically have someone from um the Board of Education serve on this board. Um, the person um that we had previously resigned from her position, so we are waiting to, for the board to appoint someone to this committee. Sergeant Stacy Thomas with the Bloomfield Police Department. Vivian Rinaldi, she's new to our committee and she is a community health educator um with our health district and she brings a lot of knowledge and great energy to the committee and we're happy to have her there. The rest are our um, our staff members, Angelica Thompson, youth services coordinator, Tiffany Wright, our assistant youth services coordinator, myself as the director and um councillor Anthony Harrington, who's the town council liaison.
Excellent. Thank you so very much. Um, can I please have a motion, councillor Politis?
Motion to move those names to town council.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries. Once again, uh, Camilla, thank you so very much for the work that you're doing on this to oversee. And thank you to all who volunteer, right? This is volunteering and they're making the, eh, their investment in our students, which I happen to call our most valuable. Um, so thank you so very much and please pass this on. This will definitely go to the next town council meeting, which I believe is on the twenty-sixth, which is the day before my birthday. Please. Aha, there you go. Thank you so very much. Thank you. Um, thank you for your time and thank you for coming and explaining it to us. Because once again, I'd like for all our residents to understand who comes before, who needs to have conversations with us and who doesn't. And these two committees have a higher power than what we get to do here on Committee on Committees. So thank you very much. You are welcome to stay or you're welcome to go. It's totally up to you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you so very much. Um, we're gonna now turn our attention to the Philly Park Committee. And from what I understand, and I'm gonna ask, um, well, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask, uh, I'm gonna go with the ladies in the chamber, um, June and Roseanne, for them to uh give us some idea on why they would like the charges changed. And then I will uh give a comment and then I will ask Mr. Malesko for his uh opinion and then we will move on as expeditiously as possible. So I'm not quite sure who would like to start, um, June or Roseanne. First of all, thank you all for being such great champions for Philly Park. You have sold me a few bricks and I see you all out there at every chance you get to put up a table to encourage the community to, one, be a part of Philly Park's history because my brick will always be there and, two, contribute to what Philly Park is going to be. So I thank you for your service. Thank you for your tenacity. Thank you for your time and thank you for shaking everybody to get their money. Roseanne or June, whoever would like to go first.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Yeah? I can't hear me, but that's okay. Um, can you hear? It's okay. All right. Um, so your question is why, why are the charges being changed?
The proposed changes to the charges and why? Yes.
Yes. Okay, um, well, councillor, the reason that they have been, I wouldn't say changed, but maybe um expanded upon is because it started out as um a fundraising effort specifically and eh with advisory and with that, you know, advising on on in regard to the park, you know, raising funds and also raising awareness. But as we took on this role and uh, you know, June and I, uh, we saw that it was far more than fundraising um efforts and that as we transitioned from um a park that we're talking about to a park that will be, there are many things that need to to uh happen or be in place to ensure that we don't end up in the place we were before, which was a a park that was neglected and that wasn't really addressing the needs of the community. So we took the, looked at the charges uh and just really expanded upon them to talk about um some of the ways in which we would work. Um, and just at the top, top of mind, we talk about the partnerships that we develop to encourage, you know, organizations, um, other uh uh small business departments, schools. Uh, we have done that from the very beginning, you know, so one of our roles is to really um support partnerships. Another and a very important one is to continue to be the voice of the community. If we see something, if we're if somebody stops us and says, hey, I'm wondering why this is or why this isn't. We are there to listen to that and try to address it and bring it to uh, you know, Dave uh and also uh, you know, whoever uh is immediately involved, you know, Rickford, for example, as our liaison, but going really with Dave and and Rickford uh and talk about it so they're aware and see if we can do anything about it or if there's a perfectly reasonable explanation which hasn't been communicated. Another thing uh that we, we are very very committed to is obviously the this is a living and breathing thing. It's not a one and done. These things like you mentioned, the picnic tables. There's gonna be events there. We want to encourage, but we also want to continue to um ensure that we don't end up in the situation we were years ago when it was neglected. So therefore, you know, we want to be on top of things, everything, you know, uh, you know, from, you know, picnic tables and the number or benches and so on, or the sign, the uh signage throughout the park, which is both educational and informative, but also looking at um you know, any issues that we see or things that um need maintenance because like, like a home, it needs, it needs um, you know, a watchful eye. So we don't do the work, we don't contract the work, but what we our responsibility together in our committee is to make sure that we keep up the high standards of which this park is going to be uh delivering to the community. So, so in, in a sense, we've expanded from just simply raising awareness and 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 raising funds, which was very successful. And I'm, I might add, with a partnership with the school and the Philly Park ambassadors was integral to that that ability to get out in front of the public, to get uh publicity for us. But in, in going to a way that we can ensure that this park is as beautiful when it is finished as it is five years from now. And sure, there'll be maintenance that is done, but we need to be vigilant because what happened last time, um, for whatever reasons, it, it, there wasn't a watchful eye on it. And you can't expect a little kid to get off a bus and say, okay, I want you to come right home. He might come right home and he might decide he's gonna go over to the Brook and then you're not gonna know where he is. So this is why we're here. Um, just to make sure that all this hard work and all the, the commitment he have done before us and the work that's being done is, you know, maintained. So that I hope that answers, um, and I'm sure I missed many things, June.
Okay, um, I would just like to add that um, I rose, Roseanne pretty much covered everything. Um, but we also want to be a liaison with uh the faith community, with the library, with the schools um, to make sure that everyone understands that Philly Park is available for all and of and available to actually plan activities on and to do things on. And um, so I want our committee to, to serve as a re- uh outreach to talk to these various organizations and uh various components of Bloomfield so that actually we will see the park being used. Um, since uh forever, it's, it's used as a place for people to walk around and for people to walk their dogs. But um, it's been, I don't know, well, it's, I guess in the seventies, in the early, uh, early likes, um, nineteen sixty, nineteen seventy. You did have organizations using it, but now we have not. We're gonna have a pavilion that's going to be available for use. And um, so I'm hoping that the committee will uh be able to serve uh, uh, its purpose will be to serve as outreach too.
And I just want to add to uh some of the things that June mentioned, uh, haven't been happening for quite a while. The library reached out, reaches out to us regularly. Um, and we have a great relationship with them and they asked me, how about this? What do you think about that? Or you know, I have an idea, maybe we can do this group. So uh, it's really, you know, sort of falling into place without even pushing the envelope, but there's so many more opportunities. Um, but when June's talking about, it was in the fifties um, and, and sixties, you had Boy Scouts, you had the Rotary Club, you had all these different organizations coming together. Uh, and also uh organizations that came together for things like an Easter egg hunt. So you have that wonderful community spirit and um you know, um, I think that we just want to keep it going and, and I um I can say that we're all about partnership from the very beginning. Uh, we, we really welcome and appreciate working with the town, working with Jonathan, with Dave, uh, Public Works that w- we really feel like, you know, we want to be your partners as well. It's not just partners with all these other organizations, but partners with you and that y- you inform us, we inform you and we work together for the greater good. That's what this is all about. And we, and like I said, and I want to say that I, I've been very, very um impressed with the people that I've met and talked to and knowing that I can call Dave or talk to councillor Curtain and, you know, get a, get what do you think? And so we're doing that right now. We just want to keep it going and keep this park um, front and center because we know, we, you know, I, I do want to say one thing um in that uh Village Pizza, the owner, I'm sure you know Maria, said to me last week, she stopped me and she said, I want to tell you that you have created a paradise in front of my restaurant and people don't know it's a paradise. And I want, I wish I could have taped it, but uh thanking us for what we've done and elevating the whole area there, that it's an area now you look and you want to stop if you have a minute. So um, you know, maybe that's a high, a, a, a high star or paradise or an oasis, as June likes to call it, in the center of town, but we will do our best to make sure that that happens. And I think that we're doing that as best we can right now.
Thank you so ver- thank you so very much. It is a paradise. It's my hiding place to go have my ice cream, but don't tell anybody. So it is a pa- it is a paradise. Um, I see councillor Curtain's hand up. I'm going to respect that hand as the liaison to the Philly Committee. Councillor Curtain, do you have anything you would like to add?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I don't have a whole lot to add, but I, I just have to say that this is one of the hidden committees, um, uh, the Philly Park Committee and I've been I've had the pleasure, even though in recent months, um, following up to the budgets and a lot of various commitments, I haven't had an opportunity to attend meetings. But I know this is one of the committees that, in my opinion, has invested uh, a lot of time and resource into I, I don't even want to use the word revitalizing the um, the park, but I would say bringing it back to its rice rightful place. Um, based on the history of some of the things I've read about Philly Park and not only that, understanding the importance of having um, that landmark in any community. I mean, I'm from New York and I enjoy a lot of various different parks in New York and going to, you know, Central Park is one of the famous one in Manhattan. But this is our Central Park, per se, in, 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 in town of Bloomfield. And I do support what the committee is doing and the change. And I believe that, you know, there's a lot of potential um work to be done and collaboration as stated uh tonight. You know, uh, one of the areas that I believe that if it was mentioned and, and I'm repeating it, please forgive me, but I think uh, trying to collaborate with our schools, I, I, I'm a big proponent of with the schools and, and, and having field trips and, and bringing the kids out into the community and having a little picnic or a little classroom outdoors. Philly Park is a great place to do that. So, you know, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to speak, but I do believe there's a lot of potential. Uh, and I think taking the committee to the next level, uh, I believe in this change, I believe it's um, it's something of importance and I do support. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Um, so I have read both the um initial charge uh in two thousand and eight and the updated charge in twenty twenty-three. And one of the things that I heard Roseanne say quite often was a collaboration with Dave, the collaboration with Dave, the collaboration with Dave. Um, the Philly Park Advisory Committee was uh formed to do fundraising efforts and to help to shape the vision of what the park would be. Um, we have gotten to that point where I think it's out to bid, if I'm not right, or it will be out to bid soon. Hopefully. It did pass referendum, so we know that we have um funding and support for this committee. What I would suggest, and I'm gonna ask Dave to give me his thoughts in a minute, and we might need to table this thing so that Philly Park and, and, and Dave and Leisure can have a conversation so that we can come together in a true collaboration. I do believe that the Philly Park Committee, um, as it was, has fulfilled its mission as the initial mission is. But I do believe that there will be ongoing fundraising, that there will be ongoing outreach, that there will be ongoing But I do believe that there will be ongoing fundraising, that there will be ongoing outreach, that there will be ongoing collaboration it needs to make sure that our park does not get to the place that it was before, but that we keep it in the pristine condition that it will be in, that we make sure that our community knows that it's there for them to be able to rent space, take up space. So I do believe that this committee needs to be rolled up under Dave. Not to be rolled into parks and rec, but to be rolled up under, right? Because if anyone's going to rent the park or need space, they're gonna have to go through leisure services to rent that space. So I think the collaboration can be a little bit tighter, where the Philly Park have that outreach arm, that community effort arm, but it's still a part of parks, recs, and leisure. So I'm gonna have Dave give you the opinion on that. And then I might ask that we table this so that the two committees can collaborate and then come back for a proper vote. Dave?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, don't, I actually agree with that assessment. Committee, when you do go back to the two thousand and eight charge, hasn't quite filled it yet, but they are close to fulfilling it. And this is the final phase that they're moving into now. You know, the bid documents have been provided to Nancy Haynes, our purchasing coordinator and co-interim finance director right now. I don't have an exact date of when the bid will be released, but I know that she's working on it. And I would anticipate it to be released within the next few weeks, hopefully even earlier than that. You know, one of the things, working with all the committee members, you know, with Roseanne and June being the co-chairs of it. One of the things that I've learned through through my years here, specifically under the leadership of Mr. Phil Shank, is when you see that passion somewhere, you make sure that you embrace that passion and you do your best to make sure that that passion is not pushed down in any way, that it's it's continued to allow to 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 flourish. So I agree that there, this this type of work should should continue. Terms of the committee, I think, you know, there's a welcome to the Friends of Philly Park webpage right now that was developed as part of this committee. Actually, that's one of the things that I would envision it being, more of likely Friends of the Bloomfield Public Libraries. One of the benefits of that is they can actually do fundraising through committee, through through that Friends, through their Friends program. I believe that they may have a five oh one C three. We, it's difficult for the town to go through and to take the donations, be involved in that. You know, another reason why I guess I would recommend that is we don't have any other actual committee for any of the other parks that we have in town. We do work hand in hand. It is my job and my responsibilities, the director of the department, to work with the residents and individuals like June and Roseanne that you see in front of you right now. I do it on a day-to-day basis. You know, I go back to Ironwood Community Partners and Dale Bertoli and Vicky Reske and the Lastalet Property. Now, that's not a formal committee, but I'll tell you that anything that goes on to that Lastalet Property, it's being pushed by the two of them, and I'm working hand in hand and taking their recommendation, and we're making that happen. I do the same thing with various other residents. So that's ultimately what I would recommend with this as well, have them work specifically with me and in in the department moving forward. So I'll be more than happy to have continued conversation with both June and Roseanne and the the committee members on this. One of the proposed charges that they have, the twenty twenty-three charge, is, you know, was what was actually one of my recommendations, I believe, probably over a year ago, but the charge would become obsolete. Where ultimately, I wanted this committee to be more of like a building committee when I first got on board so that the, any decisions that were made for the construction process had to be vetted and approved through this committee. And I believe since I've been on working with Jonathan and and the committee, that we've accomplished that goal. Now that that goal is coming to an end, I don't know if there's necessarily a need for this specific charge on this.
So is it possible, June and Roseanne and Dave, for you all to sit down and collaborate and come up with what that would look like, being under leisure parks, but not rolled up into your current recreational committee? I'd like to see that you all keep this committee. I like the idea of making it a Friends of Philly Park, like the Friends of the Library. They still have the autonomy to raise funds and to be able to direct some of the things that happens in the park, but it would be under you. So I'm trying to figure out if you all will be open to that. Then I could ask councillor Politis to make a motion, and then we can come back and take this up. The 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 members for Philly Park have already been appointed for this term that ends in November. So they still have some, you know, work to do, but probably after November, it would look a little bit different. So, Roseanne and June, are you of the mindset to have that conversation with Dave?
I don't know. Yeah. Yeah, okay. I I, Madam Chair, absolutely. I would welcome talking to Dave and exploring other ways. Our goal is to support the community, make it a welcome place and a place that everyone will feel that they're getting something special out of. That's, that's the goal. So if it makes sense, I'd love to talk further about this and collaborate.
That sounds amazing. So councillor Politis, can I have a motion to table this until our next committee on committees meeting?
Um, so moved.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Any extension this motion carries? So what that means is, at the next committee on committees meeting, there should be another proposal on the table that we can take action on. Am I correct, Marguerite?
It sounds good.
Excellent. So between now and then, I'm expecting that you all will have a conversation and then get back to us. Thank you also very much. I like, honestly, thank you, Roseanne and June. You all have been the champion, the cheerleader, the finance director, the security guard, the shakedown artist. For everyone to know about how important it is for us to invest in Philly Park, and that park is looking amazing. I can't wait until the park is finished. So thank you for your time, your energy, your effort, your tenacity, your stick-to-it-iveness, if that's such a word. Please don't correct me, all English teachers out there. But it just, thank you. On behalf of the council and the town, thank you for all that you do. And Dave, thank you, because you have so many tentacles that you are responsible for, and you do it with such grace, and you do it with our community in mind. So thank you very much. India? Is it time for approval of minutes, or is it time for? Okay.
Well, yeah, both kind of both. I said kind of both, so public comments first.
Okay. Are there any public comments in the room or on Zoom? Any public comments going once? Any public comments going twice? Any public comments going three times? Okay, public comments are over. Is there a motion to accept the minutes from our last meeting?
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you all so very much for being with us. Thank you, Marguerite, India, Dave, Camilla in her absence. Thank you also very much, Ruth Ann and Ruth and June. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm trying to get it to my head. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second, all in favor, we all do. Thank you also very much. Have a great evening and a wonderful weekend.
Thank you, councillor Curtain.